... scheduled meeting, which is the newly posted City and Municipal Commission's Order. And this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Victor Leal to lead us to the dedication.
Tomorrow's the National Day of Prayer, so in keeping with that, tomorrow if you keep the, all the public servants in our nation in your prayers, I'd appreciate it. We're to call upon the Lord and ask for His blessings, and if you walk with the Lord, He'll never be out of step. Jeremiah 29:11 says, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." Lord, this evening we come humbly before you and ask for your blessings and wisdom. Allow us to conduct this meeting in a way that's pleasing to your sight. We pray over the elections that are currently underway and that your will be done. Bring healing for those who are sick and protection for those who are in the service of our nation. Bless each and every one who is present and bless our employees, the city employees, and their families. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting. Thank you for coming out in a different location because we've got early voting going on at City Hall and didn't want to have to disrupt that process, and so we're meeting here tonight, and thank you for joining us. The next item on the agenda is the public announcement of events.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I just want to give you a brief update on the upcoming events for May. May 2nd, we will be hosting the Harlingen-San Benito NPL First Annual Bike Ride. This is a free event, and they will be meeting at Bicycle World at 6:30. On Saturday, May 4th, we'll be having our Fiesta de Mayo at Gutierrez Park from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That's on May 4th. On Saturday, May 4th, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Valley AIDS Council will be hosting the Viva la Vida 5K Run, and that's at the Sports Complex on Wilson Road. On Saturday, May 11th, we'll be having the Blues on the Hill at McKelvey Park from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. That concludes.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
I have two events. I signed up for it.
Well, it better, it needs to be an event. You need to tell me, and it needs to be briefly and 30 seconds or less, please.
It's not here. Ouch. Yolanda Shopin. Oh, this thing's not working. Hello? Hello? Woo-hoo. It's not working? Is it on purpose? It's not working.
Okay, we're gonna check it.
My name is Yolanda Shopin. I have two events. One is the cancer awareness meeting that we're gonna have Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00 in honor, of course, of our cancer survivor, Mrs., our fine, beautiful attorney here in Harlingen. And it is to, of course, bring the awareness of cancer, that no one should be terminated because they have cancer anywhere, anywhere. The second event that I have is that I am very concerned about, it's called the, I called it the combination forms. Now they call it the P-O-L-L book.
Okay, that's not an event. Please sit down.
It is an event. It's to teach people.
Please sit down.
But it's an event.
Please sit down. Thank you. Item 2 is gonna be a presentation of a proclamation proclaiming Elder Abuse Month in May of 2013. So, representatives here, on that, we welcome you, and if you can just go down. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Melissa Castellano. I'm the supervisor with Adult Protective Services in the city of Harlingen.
My name is Letizia Salinas, and I'm a worker at the Harlingen office.
My name is Daniel Rubina. I'm also a Adult Protective Service Specialist here at Harlingen. Thank you for allowing us to be here.
All right, we'd like to present this proclamation on your behalf, where as people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of this state of Texas, the city of Harlingen, by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and whereas in 2012, there were 98,290 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons who were abused in Texas, of which 60,854 were confirmed, and whereas elder abuse is grossly unreported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid, and whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they're in good health or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia, and whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it's our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Harlingen, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. So we want to present this proclamation to you all and recognize you for the fine work that you do to help so many people who are victims of this type of abuse and also of the kind of neglect, and you, you reach out to them, you help them, and you make sure that they're protected. It serves a tremendous and valuable purpose in our community, and so thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank the city of Harlingen and throughout Cameron County for reporting elder abuse and disabled abuse. We could not do it without your calls and your cooperation and the collaboration of law enforcement and EMS and of the city commissioners and all the organizations in our community. And while May is Elder Abuse Prevention Month as the form of proclamation for APS staff, every day is Elder Abuse Month, and we always strive to protect those in need.
Thank you so much. Your pleasure. Item 3 is the recognition of the Criminal Investigations Division of the Harlingen Police Department. So if y'all, all come on up.
That boy Danny.
Danny.
And he's a head guy.
I know, but he's showing.
It's the first time he's here, but.
I know, and I wonder.
It's not time.
I'd like to introduce everybody.
Okay, put up, I can, and next to this is all our team, officers of Dixie, of Terrell, of Russell, of Tyler Buck. So in that last game is Sergeant Weaver and Officer Carlos Drummond.
I'd like to, this is a great opportunity and an honor to recognize each and every one of you. We have a great police department, and you do such a fine job in protecting our community. I've talked repeatedly about how our crime rate has dropped over the last five years consistently, and the huge numbers that we, that you have put up in the last two years, the 18 percent reduction in the crime rate, year before last, and then last year, the 20 percent reduction in the, in the crime rate. So it's a great opportunity to, to recognize you, also not only for doing a professional job, also for the volunteer work that you all do. A great event over the past, over the weekend, Dr. Moda organized, was the, to bring awareness to autism in our community, and that was a fantastic event that the police department put together. So it's my pleasure and privilege now on behalf of the entire city commission to read to you this certificate of commendation presented to the Harlingen Police Department Criminal Investigation Division and Targeted Response Unit, where as on April 1st, 2013, at 6:04 PM, the Harlingen Police Department received a call relating to a home disturbance. Shots were fired and a 21-year-old female died at the scene, whereas members of the Criminal Investigation Division and the Targeted Response Unit were very instrumental through leadership, street-level investigation, in solving this murder case in a timely manner. Whereas Harlingen Police Department personnel have on a daily basis demonstrated their dedication and commitment to the public safety of the citizens of the city of Harlingen, now therefore I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, along with the city commission and the citizens of this great city, wish to extend our sincere appreciation to the Harlingen Police Department for their outstanding performance of duty. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
General, that's, the dedication, I'm calling out a page for a couple minutes.
Thanks to each and every one of you. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, Mayor. Thank you to Danny Villarreal and all his investigative division and all the police department to deter that crime. Thank you for all the help and support.
All right, thank you. And item 4 is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep Community Watch Trash Off Day, April 27, 2013.
Mayor, we wanted to kind of brief the, the public on what happened this past Saturday. We had the, the first Community White Trash Off Day. We had a lot of volunteers that, that helped us. We want to thank our code enforcement department and everybody who's participated. We had the United Healthcare, Harlingen Boys and Girls Club, Matthew James. Also, we had volunteers for the Longhorn Steakhouse, the, the Green Team from the University of Texas, Brownsville, R O T C. We also had people from the Tamayo Home for Boys. It was a really good event, very successful event. We had approximately 12.79 tons of debris that were dropped off at the site. This is different than, than the traditional neighborhood clean sweeps that we have, where we go out to an area and we clean it. This particular one, we allowed the citizens to come in and drop off the debris and the tires. We had 190 tires that were also brought in. So overall, we want to thank all the volunteers, our code enforcement department, and everybody that participated in this first Community White Trash Off. We hope to do it again this year, and I will be inviting everybody to, to volunteer. Thank you for participating.
Okay, that was a great event on Saturday, and we have some recognition. Mary Rieto and Angie Cassana, are they here? They donated five cases of water and to the effort. Is anyone from United Healthcare here? We have representatives of United Healthcare. All right, we had several people from United Healthcare, Maria de Rosario Segura, Loya Alonso, and Jesse Fares participated in that event. Longhorn Steakhouse, are you, anybody here from Longhorn? All right, we had Amanda Nereo, Samuel Martinez, Edgar Fettis, and Diana Sartamante, all participated. And then if I, if I call your name, come on up and I'd like to present you the certificate. Matthew James. And how about UT Brownsville, R O T C? Anybody here from UT Brownsville, R O T C? Okay, well, then we want to thank everybody who participated, and we'll, and all of these certificates will try so furiously signed.
We'll make sure that.
You're getting at the meeting, we'll get to them. All right, thank you. Item 5 is the approval of minutes, the regular meeting of April 3rd. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
May I make a motion that we approve the minutes? Second.
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consent Agenda, items 6A and B is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, second.
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 7, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading that eliminates all-day Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course summer golf specials to become effectively, effective annually on the first Monday after the start of daylight savings time and end at the close of business on September 30th of that year, and replace it with all-day summer golf specials to be effective from May 1st to the close of business on September 30th of each year thereafter. Go ahead.
What this does is, right now, our summer rates are dependent on daylight savings. In 2007, the US government moved daylight savings up to the second Sunday of March, which is in the middle of our peak season. So we are really losing a lot of revenue, and, you know, this year alone, from March 10th through April 30th, we had a total of $19,500 in unrealized revenue due to daylight savings. We have a lot of winter taxes still here through March and mid-April, and this would allow us to optimize our, our revenues during the peak season.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Now, we need to ask the city attorney to read the caption, would you please?
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending ordinance number 11-29 of the Harlingen City Code as amended, to eliminate that all-day Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course Summer Golf Specials, Summer Golf Specials, become scheduled annually on the first Monday after the start of daylight savings and end at the close of business on September 30th of that year, and replace it with all-day Summer Golf Specials to be effective from May 1st to the close of business on September 30th of each year thereafter. Said ordinance to be effective on June 1st, 2013, providing for publication, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 8, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading that increases the Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course junior membership fee from $15 to $20 per month.
Our junior membership was established in 1991. It has not changed since then. After a little further discovery, I found out that it really hasn't changed since 1988. When the city took over in 91 is when they actually made the ordinance that established the junior memberships. Doing some more research, I checked some other golf courses in the area, including Treasure Hills, who does not have a monthly membership. They have a reduced daily fee, which is more than what our actual green fee is for the general public. South Padre Island is over twice the amount, and that's also a daily fee. Palm View does have a, and McAllen does have a junior monthly membership, which is $35 versus our $20 proposed. Los Lagos is also $35. River Bend, Tarrasota have no junior membership savings.
Can you explain what qualifies, you know, somebody for a junior membership?
Most certainly. It's up to the age of 18. So they can be anywhere from five years old to, to 18 years old.
And how many people does that include?
We sell 520, we average 526 annually. Now, the bulk majority of those are done through Harlingen High School, Harlingen South, and San Benito. Those three schools pay for their golf teams to play for the nine months of school.
So the school district pays the $15 a month for the kids there?
Yes, during, during the school year on the golf.
And what about kids that otherwise wouldn't be part of the school program?
Those are, those would be paid on an individual basis.
Do we have any, any program or opportunities for low-income kids that might participate?
We have, well, we have a couple of organizations that actually pay summer fees. They pay this green fee. This year, Our Ladies Golf Association, who has 45 members, along with Dixieland Park, Golf Crest condominiums, and Sunshine Estates on the north side of town, raised enough money to pay for 24 kids for their summer junior, junior memberships. So for, we'll have 24 kids this summer that are paid for and get to play for free.
At the new rate?
Actually, we've already entered those in, so it actually went in at the $15 rate.
Well, that new rate forced them to reduce the amount of kids they can sponsor them?
It, it varies from year to year how many they actually pay for, but yeah, I mean, you know, it would be, if they raise $1,000, yeah, it would, it would limit the amount that they.
Do we feel like you're good stewards of, of the low-income?
Yes.
That they, would you be opposed to a modification to the ordinance to fix their rate at the existing rate?
Which one?
Which would be $15?
For the organizations that are prepaid?
For a nonprofit who pays for low income?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it would be, it's only a $5 increase.
Yeah, but when you're talking 20, 25 kids and you've got a nonprofit budget, most nonprofits are, you know, they scrape by to get their budget, you know, paid anyway, so.
I understand that.
I just don't want to price, you know, our, you know, our low-income folks out of the market, especially the kids that want to go and participate in, in an organized sport.
I've run our junior program for the last eight years. You know, we do, each year, we actually have, like this year, we actually had three of these that carried over, that don't, that are not utilized, and that does happen from time to time. Just kind of depends on, you know, how many kids we have come out on, on a regular basis, and we do our best to make sure that they're coming out.
I figure that, that $5, that $25 a participant, that organization's gonna have to increase their budget for this at that same level, of participation, about $500.
Yeah. I mean, if we have that many, yeah.
So, how do you screen if somebody comes in and says, "I want the..."
The Ladies Golf Association used to take some scholarships, and they would have the kids and their parents fill out forms. What ended up happening a few years ago is we had less and less of those individuals that would be issued, the memberships, they wouldn't always come out. So what the ladies asked me to do was to kind of distribute them according to the kids that are coming out on a regular basis, to make sure that they're getting the most bang for the buck. And we do try to give those to younger kids and kids of lower income levels that, that can utilize them the most.
So if somebody gets this and they don't show up, then that money's wasted?
No. I revoke it and I give it to somebody else.
Okay, well, are you opposing amendment to the, well, ordinance?
Yeah, but I'm gonna, after she reads it, I'll make a motion.
Would you please read the caption, city attorney? You can all recognize the amendments.
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending the ordinance numbers 91-48, 94-56, 97-55 of the Harlingen City Code as amended, to increase the Tony Butler Municipal Golf Course junior membership fee from $15 to $20 per month. Said ordinance to be effective on June 1st, 2013, providing for publication, providing the savings clause, providing the severability clause, and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this ordinance with the modification that we continue the same $15 per month rate for any nonprofit organization in the act of sponsoring a youth participant.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
In the form of scholarships.
All right. I'll recognize Mr. Lozano.
Well, I appreciate that amendment. I think that obviates most of the concerns, but again, just real quickly, he commenced by suggesting an annual thing like the golf teams, but this caption that she just read pertains solely to the summer. And just a couple of weeks ago, in late April, we continue to stellar performance since the '60s. I think there have been several articles recently. So the Harlingen High School teams both got to regional, and, and again, that was probably within the last 10 days. And what I would suggest is competition, which a lot of you vocalize as a big part of free enterprise, well, competition can work by not excluding certain people during the summer. And $5, getting back to the heart of this issue, the last year, we've also heard a lot about what the middle class is in this country. For $5, it's a nominal amount, but yet it can have an impact on a couple of families. I don't think you should increase it at all, just like you did earlier this year with the swimming team. He's already saying he's making over $19,000. You've already given him the $19,000, and now with the facts that have been elicited, we're talking about $30 or $40, a $30 or $40 difference. I say no class differential on this for, for savings of $30 or $40, but it could impact, just like we've had for the last 40 years, it could impact a very good golfer of any gender. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries, will make those changes in the, before the second reading. Item 9, consider and take action to approve an agreement between the Economic Development Corporation of Harlingen, Inc. and Axion, Texas for $100,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilmembers. A little too close. The Harlingen Economic Development Board took up an agreement, a renewal for an agreement with Axion, Texas. Axion, Texas is a micro lender of small business loans up to $50,000. We, last year, started a program where the applicants in the Harlingen area could apply to Axion, Texas, and be eligible for an interest rate buy-down from the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation, which essentially made their loans down to about 2% if they created so many jobs, and it was really a, a one or two job needed to satisfy their requirement. When renewal came up, we started looking at the agreement and some of the formulas in the agreement, and the formulas didn't really jive with what was standard practice in terms of interest rate buy-downs. And so it took a while for us to get the agreement through to Axion, and it's six months into the contract time period, but Axion has some loans pending, and the thing that we're waiting on is to amend these contracts so that we don't pay more than what we were supposed to initially, what the intent of the board was, and at the same time, be able to provide loans, low income, or low interest for loans to small businesses here in the city.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we take action to accept.
And that Axion, I gotta admit, they said that they've been charging too much in terms on that, like 12%. And how did they, they work, how they work that?
Well, Axion has a 12 and 1/2% interest that they try to, to charge for their micro loans in Harlingen.
It's separate.
If they participate in our program. If they don't participate in our program, it's based on their credit. So if their FICO, FICO score is 600, then they get a better interest rate than if it was a 450. So it's really based on their, on their, on their ability to pay and their credit. So that's how Axion determines those interest rates. But if somebody actually wants to participate in the Harlingen EDC buy-down program, they set the rate at 12 and 1/2%, and we buy it down 10% to 2 and 1/2%. So all the, the, the borrower pays is 2 and 1/2%. So that's a very good interest rate. They don't pay the 12 and 1/2. We pay 10% upfront, and that reduces their payments on a monthly basis.
So the, the actual interest rate is 12 and 1/2, and that's what it's computed at, or is it computed at 2 and 1/2% for the?
For the buy-down?
For the organization's schedule?
Well, we basically have two amortization schedules. One is at 12 and 1/2, and the other one at 2 and 1/2, and the difference is what we, the EDC... and the difference is what we, the EDC puts in upfront.
Okay, so we're paying, we're paying down that amount?
Right.
The difference between-
Ten percent.
Okay.
These are loans that otherwise probably would not get made by a regular commercial lending institution or even the SVA, or, or the alternative for the borrower would be to go to a predatory lender, which there are a whole bunch of them out there right now. So this really does provide a nice service to folks who probably couldn't otherwise obtain a loan. Axiom capital is at risk, and all the EDC does is help, by buying down the interest rate, help the, the borrower make the affordable payment.
And the EDC's not taking, they're not taking on any liability if there's a default.
Not at all, not at all. Actually, if there's a default, we actually get some money back because we paid down the entire interest for the entire term of the loan. So if there's a default, then we're owed some money back, so. But we don't want them to default, obviously. We want them to succeed. These are, are lend, borrowers who are typically, as the mayor said, not going to be able to, to borrow from conventional methods, and they don't want to go into unscrupulous type of lenders. And so this is a, a kind of a last resort for them. And Axiom is willing to take the risk. They're a nonprofit entity. Actually, a lot of their funds are derived from contributions from banks and lenders, like Frost Bank and, and Bank of America and a few others.
Is there another way to help that, a small business now with the action? With another way to pick, to help that, a small business of yours, too?
Well, this is the program that we have set up for, with Axiom. Obviously, we can always take a look at other programs to try and set up in, in the future.
So this hundred thousand dollars would be allocated to pay interest?
To pay interest on loans. At this point, we've got six loans that are pending, and that would pay down about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of interest and create about eleven jobs.
And then, once you've spent a hundred thousand dollars in interest, buying down interest, for, is this for the calendar year or for fiscal year?
It's through, it's through November, November th- of two thousand thirteen.
But they understand that it's a, it's a annual approval?
Right.
And next year's not guaranteed.
Right, right.
Once that hundred thousand dollars is expended, then that's, there's no guarantee.
And last year, yeah, last year, we had actually allocated fifty thousand dollars, and it wasn't all expended. So I carried over some of that and added approximately sixty, seventy thousand dollars to, to, to basically get to the hundred thousand. So we're using some of last year's funds, as well as new funds this year, to a total of a hundred thousand. And we hope that we can lend it out, or basically push it out, because if we pushed it out, that means we've, we've gone through the process of buying down enough loans to, to use all hundred thousand dollars.
The EDC's maximum exposure for the fiscal year is a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
I think we can find another way to help the small businesses the same way we help the big ones.
Well, we have other, other means of helping them. We also have to skills development funds for small businesses so that we can get some job training for small businesses and, and grant, and those are grants, actually. So, you know, if small businesses are looking to expand and are gonna add jobs or private investment, all they have to do is reach out to us, and then we can try to find the right program for them. They're not necessarily EDC programs, but we'll be their, their liaison, if you will, with all the other different agencies that are out there.
And, and the, the bottom line is, is that the small business is on, is only gonna see that year two-point-nine percent interest on whatever money they're borrowing, right?
That's correct.
So that allows them, you know, a pretty good opportunity to get into business at a lower rate.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, correct.
And so what is the, what is the total loan amount that that hundred thousand dollars will allow them to lend to, to small business?
It really depends on, on the, the lenders. I mean, I guess I could make that calculation. I haven't made that calculation, but-
Was it ten million dollars?
No. For example, on the thirty-three thousand dollars that I was talking about, what that buys down is-
Ten percent?
About-
Hundred thousand dollars?
A hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of loans.
A hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Say that again?
A hundred thousand dollars only buys down, only buys down ten percent of a hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of loans?
No, no, no.
Thirty-three thousand?
Thirty-three thousand dollars buys down a hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of loans.
Yeah, no, I'm wondering what-
So if you multiply that by three, it's about three hundred thousand dollars worth of loans.
So we're buying down the full term, not just one year?
We're buying down the full term.
Full term.
Some of the terms are thirty-
This hundred thousand's that it carry forward?
For three years, four years, five years, yes.
Okay. And the, the maximum term is a five-year loan?
The maximum is sixteen months, five years, yes.
Five years, so, so this hundred thousand we're investing today goes forward?
For five years in, in most instances, yes.
Very good.
And that opens up about three hundred thousand dollars in loans to small businesses at a two-point-nine percent interest rate.
Two-point-five.
So it's first come, first served.
Yes.
Okay, did we have a second on that?
I'll second if they have, had the motion.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll recognize you, ma'am, but I just, let us finish getting the, we have a motion.
Who made the motion?
We have a motion, but I don't have a second.
Yeah, a second by Commissioner Lee Allen. All right, you, you'd like to state your name and your, and your residence address, come forward. Make your comment.
Yes, my name is Frances Leone, and I live at five-twenty North Commerce. I do have a small business, and I did apply for a loan with the EDC. First of all, I'd like to say Axiom, they're very strict to give you a loan. Very, very, they make it hard. Now, like Chino said, they give all these big businesses a lot of tax money. A lot of them, they don't pay back. A lot of them are grants. But all these people that have small businesses all around town and have been here for quite a while, they don't get any help. Why can't they get grants? Why do they have to get a loan? And with a hundred thousand, like he says, or three hundred thousand, for all the businesses here, it's nothing. What are you gonna lend? Five or ten thousand dollars? They're not gonna do anything. I got forty, and I didn't do everything I wanted to do. And yet I have a payment every month. What about all these other ones that have had thousands of dollars, haven't paid back? Haven't know what they did with it? You need to help your small businesses here in town, because they pay taxes too. And some of them have been here for a long time, paying taxes. And where do they get? Nothing. They don't get any help from the city. And I think that's bad.
All right, thank you. All right.
If, if I may follow up.
There's another, there's another citizen that'd like to make a comment. Mr. Reyes.
Yes. What I'm wondering is, there's no citizen communication today?
Yes.
Because it's not on here.
It's gone?
No.
What? I'm sorry.
Citizen communication, will we actually talk? Is that towards the end or is that against the?
As they am.
Well, now, did you want to speak about this issue? I, I'm gonna, we'll-
Well, I have a business too, and, and she's right.
We're gonna take citizen communication up later.
Okay, well, that's not what I was told when I was called. Just like when I called, because I was out of town, they told me I was gonna be at City Hall. But I was out there, and then they had it closed. And then somebody finally came to the door and said, "No, it's over here." Because I had some very interesting stuff that I wanted to show you individuals about what's going on with a certain depart, department here in the city. I've already talked to the leaders of that department, and that's happened. So I'm getting ready to go to the next step. And I wanted to let you guys know, but you know what? It's more interesting.
Okay, well, I'm gonna rec, I'm gonna record.
That's fine. But I have a business too, and what she's saying is right. Because I get taken for right all the time. And I'm, I'm very tired of it.
All right, thank you.
One final note. The funds that the 4A corporation uses must be within the state statute, must be used within the state statute. So a lot of times, the loans that may be out there, the people that desire loans, don't actually qualify under the 4A statutes. So we're trying to follow the law, and that's basically it.
Right, and the headquarters of the Small Business Administration is here in Harlingen, and they're so specifically by the federal government to also work with the regular commercial lenders to provide businesses, small businesses, and they're, and they do make, they make a lot of loans.
Yes, sir.
So we do have that, we do have that available to, to our community here in Harlingen.
And we also have a Small Business Development Center that helps to establish business plans that are needed when someone is applying for a loan, to help organize their paperwork, to help organize their thoughts even. We have some in-house experience ourselves in establishing small businesses. So there's a lot of guidance out there, some technical assistance that's worth a lot of money, that's-
Is there any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then the motion carries. Item ten, consider and take action to accept or reject bids and award the contract for the Third Street Drainage Ditch Improvement Project under bid two thousand thirteen dash oh four.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is the Third Street Drainage Improvement Project, and the limits are from Davis Street to Loop four ninety-nine. The funding is from the Hazmat Medication Grant Program funded by FEMA and the Texas Division of Emergency. On April twenty-third, I received an opening total of two bids for the project. The lowest bid for the project was submitted by FJW Construction in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Staff recommends that we accept the lowest bid submitted by FJW in that amount.
Mayor, I make the motion that we accept that recommendation.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll be answering questions. Did you run a Dunn &amp; Bradstreet report on them?
I'm sorry?
Have you run a Dunn &amp; Bradstreet report on them?
Uh, no, not yet. We're, we're in the process of getting some of their paperwork back.
You know, I would, we've had difficulty before with contractors, and contractors have gone bankrupt.
Right.
And I'm uncomfortable offering out work to someone who may have, I mean, I don't know anything about this firm.
We'll check. They did a project for us last year, and we didn't have any issues with that.
Well, I, I prefer knowing the financials first.
Okay.
They do provide references to us, and we'll, we'll check those as well.
The statute requires that they provide proof of financial responsibility.
Correct.
How do they, how do you qual, how are you qualifying this firm?
We basically get references from them. As far as financial responsibility, make sure, we make sure they have the equipment, the personnel to do the project. Other than that, we don't check.
And they are bond?
We often have a performance bond that, that's required by-
There's a five percent bond on all projects.
Okay. What do you want us, what do you, Commissioner, what would you like to do here?
I'd like to see their D and B report. I know other companies have performance bonds, and the city's been hesitant and actually has not challenged those bonds when there was a, when the contract was not fulfilled on time.
We, we can check that. That's not a requirement of the, of the information to be provided, but we can make that as part of the financial responsibility section. But, but it's not a requirement, Commissioner. I will, you know, we, we will double-check that.
We'll check that.
Okay, you want to award it, can we award it subject to a satisfactory review of the Dunn &amp; Bradstreet report?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
I'll make a, a limit to my motion.
Okay.
Taken consideration, Commissioner, whether you request it.
All right, that's a, and then, who seconded it?
I seconded.
I don't, I could, I didn't hear it was seconded.
Well, he, he said he's amending his motion to award the bid for, so to the staff's recommendation, subject to a satisfactory review by the, our financial department of the Dunn &amp; Bradstreet report. And so, you second?
I do.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take action to approve and adopt a resolution, the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending resolution number thirteen dash thirty-three to order emergency appointments to serve as early voting. Valid board of election day presiding judges and alternate presiding judges each serves election officials for the May eleventh, two thousand thirteen general election for the purpose of electing one member to the position of mayor at large, one member to the position of city commissioner of District One, and one member to the position of city commissioner of District Two, this Harlingen City Commission, and other matters related foregoing.
Mayor, since the last time that the resolution was presented, we had some vacancies because we were still trying to find some judges. Today, I present to you a resolution with all the judges, and those that are highlighted or bulk are the ones that are being recommended for appointment. The rest of the judges were already appointed back in April third of this year. So this will complete the appointment of the judges, and, and-
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the resolution as amended.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twelve, or, uh, board appointments, sorry, the board appointments.
Mayor, um-
Any board appointments?
Yes. For Harlingen Proud, I'd like to nominate Madu De La Paz, and for the Veterans Advisory Board, Kimberly Piazza.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So, I'm second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, would, would, uh, would you like to go, would we like to do the, go ahead and do citizen communication now?
I would.
Okay, uh, let's go to item fifteen, we'll go to citizen communication.
The first one on the list, Mayor, is Rambo Sano, those pertaining to the golf.
All right, he's not here, so.
Joe Rubio?
Good evening, Harlingen City Commissioner, Mayor Boswell, City Attorney Roxanne Conforte. For the record, I'm Ossario Junior, reside at twenty-three oh nine on Cinder Road, Harlingen, Texas, seven eight five five two. What I've done basically is, I'm asking tonight for an investigation to be given to the internal auditor or to the Harlingen Police Department in regards to what I consider potential mismanagement of funds from the Harlingen CBB. There's a spreadsheet that accompanies my letter asking that we invoke the city charter in regards to this matter, which has some questionable expenses. One is Danny Homely for travel. Marcy Fuller, I don't know, I've never even heard of the Marcy Fuller. You know, and they pretty much have traveled to Utah, California, Chicago, New Jersey, Detroit Lakes, and San Diego, all on the taxpayers' expense. And we allocate thirty-three thousand dollars for the Birding Festival. That's what we allocate, that's, that's what's on the budget. You know, when we do the budget, we say thirty-three thousand dollars is going to them, but we've gone way beyond that, you know? And what I'm asking for is, you know, for, for, for the consideration of the city commission to involve the city internal, the internal auditor or city attorney or whatever means that, to investigate this. Okay, number two, I would like to publicly thank Mr. Chino Sanchez and Victor Lian for the efforts on the Rainbow Complex that they're assisting me with. I would like to go on to the next subject real quick. On the Tomos Sports Complex, I'd like to get together with Mr. Victor Lian. The sports complex is deteriorating, that bridge out there, you know, it's just falling apart, it needs to be replaced. I don't understand why we can't spend a little bit of money on it. The, the steel structures are, are rusting, it looks really nasty. I think it's time that we start putting our, our money into our parks. The other item that I have is, we lost, or was embezzled, forty-nine thousand during the Harlingen Proud, and not one of you guys on the city commission said anything about it. This happened in December. Poof, forty-nine thousand dollars disappears, and no one says, "Hey, how did it happen?"
That's two minutes, Mayor.
Okay, last item.
I yield my minutes to him.
Well, it's all right, I, I think I finished, anyway. Remember, I didn't see the clock?
Yes, I did.
Well, you should, if you want me to advance one, ten seconds, thank you.
Okay, the next one, Mayor, is Yolanda Shoffin. Okay, the next one, mayor, is Yolanda Shonk.
Yolanda Shonk, two fifty-eight, Antas Palmas. This has to do with, I have always picked up the combination sheets after an election and I love to see who votes, who does not vote and how every sheet is applied and whether the, um, the clerk signed it, the judge signed it, the date was there. And it's just so exciting for me to see who we not invited. And on one sheet at one time, I was shocked, just shocked. All the above voted twice by mistake. And I said, but that can't be. And I looked at it again and I called the candidate that had run against this individual for mayor. And I said, look at this, look at this. All the above voted twice by mistake. Signed by the judge, by the way, not by me. It was signed by the judge. And that's what I told the Department of Justice. You mean to tell me that this man is a prominent realtor in town running for mayor? Not to mention he is a realtor broker and he signed and voted twice by mistake. Boy, that tells me one thing. We either don't know how to read and write by now, something is wrong. So I sent it to the Department of Justice and I'm planning to send this one. I have learned today by Miss Amanda, thank God, that it's called the poll book now. It's a poll book. And I'm hoping, because the last combination sheets I picked up did not have a date. Some of them did not have the election, not the judge, not the clerk, not even Amanda's name. I thought that was kind of strange and that's what I told the Department of Justice as well. So I'm looking forward to this time because I plan to send the poll book and make sure that everything is there. The date of the election, not no time maybe, but the clerk, the judge and Amanda's signature. And how they vote is very important. Whether they vote with a registration, um, card or a license or who are they? I haven't found anybody dead yet, but believe me, I'm looking. Nothing will surprise me in this town. All the above voted twice by mistake. And here it was in the middle, a former mayor. Thank you and you have a blessed day.
All right, and la, and the last one.
And the last one is Raymond Reyes.
My name is Raymond Reyes, commissioners, mayor. My family's been here for a while, originally from San Antonio. Uh, but I only usually come to these things where there's something that's unfortunately drastically affected one of my businesses, which again, it has. Um, on this particular instance, I've provided information, um, to the people in charge of the certain department that's supposed to protect us, that actually got an award and stuff like that. Every time I provide this information, this information never makes it to the right hand. It has photographs, it has a lot of details of things that have been going on. It involves my business, my employees, other things that are going on, but it never gets looked at. Uh, recently met with Mr. Billby. He actually suggested I talk with these individuals again. Nobody's contacting me. I've tried to attempt to contact the city manager, I get somebody else that will talk to the department head that don't handle it. I'm not going to go there anymore. I've already talked to somebody else, um, I think, uh, the Texas Rangers. They want all that information. Sent to them. Uh, I even have incidents where my daughter got pulled over and then they let her go and they asked for her phone number? No, I don't think so. I told the assistant city attorney about this issue and he was very concerned. He said he was actually looking into that because he started to notice a trend. No. The city manager is in charge of all these departments and all these things that are going on. There needs to be good oversight because there's a lot of stuff that are going on that either he's missing. I tried to get a copy of this at the city office when I got here yesterday. They told me they don't make copies anymore, that they want the citizens to print them out off the internet. What if they don't have a computer? What if they're low income? We're not taking these things into consideration and ultimately, these people that are messing around, there were some things that happened a couple of years back that ordinance was passed and, you know, affected my businesses or stuff. Those, that was changed. Those people that were the key behind that are no longer with the city, thank God. So there's going to be some other stuff that's going to be coming. I've been trying to go every other method to avoid this from happening because I live here. But if that's the only way it has to go, then that's the only way it has to go.
Texas.
Okay?
We're not, uh, we're not permitted to respond or discuss it.
No, I know. But last time I was interrupted. So, you know, I figured that somebody would jump in, but I'm thinking that they probably, you know.
Well, what I, what I was gonna say is we'll, I will, uh, ask the city manager to follow up.
Yeah, it might be a little bit too late. But he can go ahead and call me and I can give him all the, the stuff, photographs and stuff like that. There's even video that I'm considering posting on YouTube. So, you know, that way they can't say that it's made up, that I didn't take any form of, try to prevent this from happening. You know what happened? People don't listen and they have to learn the hard way. That's fine.
Well, this is the first time, uh, I've heard of it and-
Well, I know. But I have made, you know, with the proper people to try to get them involved. They're not doing it.
All I'm saying is we can have the city manager follow up with you.
No, let's see if that happens because I've been trying to get ahold of them for three weeks. And I'm very busy myself. I don't just stay here, linger around thinking I'm in charge of what I do on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to item thirteen, closing executive session, chapter five sixty-one, subchapter D, VTC, here, right? Section six nine fifty-one point oh eight seven, and fact fifty-one point oh seven one regarding commercial financial information. From business prospect, which the city commission is conducting economic development negotiations to discuss and deliberate financial or other incentives. Business prospect knows project not going to seek legal advice in the city attorney regarding the subject. Is there, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to go up to one of the room, one of the other rooms in the building to go into executive session and we will return if there is an action item. Okay, we're, uh, out of executive session at six forty-two. And we're going to item fourteen, which is to consider to take action to approve the third amendment to the agreement between Raina Family Development Limited and the Economic Development Corporation.
Mayor, make the motion that we take action to approve the third amendment to the agreement between the Raina Family Development-
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you all. We're, we're adjourned. See you next time.